For Planning Commission Meeting for December 12th. And we will start with the roll call.
Commissioner Keating?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Osorio?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
And Chair President Cooper?
Present. Mr. Blaney is not here?
Yeah.
All right. Now, next we'll prove the agenda. Better accommodate members of the public for inconvenience in the order presentation. As the agenda may not be presented after upon the order listed. Is there any member of the Planning Commission that wants to change the agenda or approve it as is? Seeing none then we'll... Do we need a motion to approve the agenda? No? Okay. So the agenda as posted is approved. Presentation and information reports, that is none. Next is public comment. Now, this section, members of the public are allowed to address the commission on any item of interest which is not already on the agenda. Do we have anybody in the public that wants to come forward and take this opportunity to address the commission on any item they have an interest in? I don't see anybody getting up to do that.
That me?
That's you.
Is that me?
Yes. You have an opportunity right now to speak to us.
Something thing out here on the... What, on the... What, in the town? Or south in the town? Is that what you're asking? I can't hear very long. I'm not hearing what you're saying.
Oh. Maybe if I turn the microphone on, you can hear me. Okay. So this is the... This is the point in the meeting, the public comment section, where the public is allowed to address the commission on any item that they have an interest in that's not already included in the agenda. So are you here to speak?
I'm talking about the zone. Is that included in the agenda?
Yeah.
I don't have anything besides that.
Okay. Well, then you'll have an opportunity to speak once we get to that item on the agenda. Okay.
It's not on the agenda.
What do you want to talk about that's not on the agenda?
Sir, could we see your map that you have there? We just want to clarify that that's what...
Who wants to see it? You're going to identify yourself here, okay? And identify properly. My name is Cameron Hayes, and I'm here to talk about these zoning things that they're zoning for a building out towards my mom's place. And I got this... I didn't actually get it in the mail. My mom get it, but I'm helping her with her bills and stuff this day, so that's all reason I'm privy to this, which I think is kind of sad that everybody didn't get it. Just the people that lived around there evidently got it, because I didn't get one. I live in town. My son didn't get one. Nobody else got one of these, but I got this from my mom. It is about... And it says that there's going to be a meeting here tonight about it, that just these parcels that are zoned for coming, the following planning commissions follow the pre-zone and annexation for four parcels, a planned unit development, investing in tentatively subdivision map for 97 single-family homes, residential lots on...
Mr. Chairman, I think that...
3.327 acres.
I think he's talking about what's on the agenda tonight.
Oh, it is on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I thought somebody said it wasn't.
Well, we weren't sure what you had there, so...
Oh, okay. Well, I said I was...
Yes. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that. We're a little confused, but yeah, you'll... This is on the agenda. You'll get a chance to speak on that particular item. All right. Regular calendar. Number one, approve the minutes from the 11:14 meeting as presented by Community Development Administrative Assistant Carol Bartel. So entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the 11:14 meeting.
I motion we accept the minutes.
Well, we have a motion to accept the minutes as written. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion or amendment to that? Not hearing any. All in favor of approving the minutes as written in our package, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor say no. Or all opposed say no. Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Second item is consideration of pre-zone and annexation for four parcels, and this is the item you want to talk about. Consideration for pre-zone and annexation for four parcels and a planned unit development with a vesting tentative subdivision map. So we'll get this party started by opening it up to Holly Owen, our Community Development Director, to speak on this issue.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners, member of the public. Holly Owen, Community Development Director. Tonight you have before you several actions, actually, on one project. This is a pre-zone and annexation for four parcels, a planned unit development, investing tentative subdivision map for 97 single-family residential lots by the applicant Westar Construction. They are here tonight. They're seeking approval of a number of planning applications, and this has been a couple of years in the making, and these planning applications constitute a project under CEQA. There are four different actions that you're being considered to look at tonight, and that is the reorganization or annexation of 42.52 acres to the city of Kingsburg and Selma-Kingsburg Fowler Sanitation District, and the detachment of those acres from the respective county agencies. The pre-zone of 42.52 acres of land from the county's AE-20 zone, which is currently zoned to Kingsburg R-17, a planned unit development for 33.27 acres, which involves single-family residential uses and associated open space features, and approving a vesting tentative subdivision map, which is tract number 6480, which is the 97 lot, single-family residential subdivision on 33.27 acres. Just to note, they went through the allocation process as is required of a project of this type. They received allocation for 105 single-family residential lots in 2024. It is within the planning area of the Kingsburg General Plan and also the North Kingsburg Specific Plan. Specific Plan is quite detailed, like a detailed general plan. It sets forth processing and design requirements for development occurring within a particular plan area, which is what this project is in the North Kingsburg Specific Plan. The requirement is that we must process the tentative subdivision map as a planned unit development, and that is consistent with Kingsburg's conditional use permit process, and that is the purview of the Planning Commission. You have a number of recommended actions, which we will get back to after the staff report, so that will be top front at that point. There was a... Of course, the approval of the general plan, land use element, and North Kingsburg Specific Plan as prior actions and review. Subject properties are... Carol, you could probably find that tan map, I think, are located on the southwest corner of Mendocino and Carruthers Avenues in Kingsburg. As you can see, there's four parcels they've been asked to annex, but only three of them are part of their project. So that is typical of what the county requires. When there's an annexation involved, they like nice, neat, square parcels, no islands or peninsulas or isolated pieces of land. So that's part of their contiguous mapping that they need to do for the county. They wish to... And that is the 42.52 acres. Again, when they come into the city, they then get Kingsburg Police and Fire and other services, and they detach from the county services that give them those now, which is the fire, you know, the county fire, county sheriff. And so they are... Will now be served by Mid Valley Waste Collection. Once they come into the city, they will be connected to city sewer water and storm drainage infrastructure, and they are required to join the Community Facilities District, which helps to fund public services to that site. CFDA does fund lighting and landscaping services, but it also funds police, fire, ambulance, and emergency response, as well as park and open space. So that's the reason... The annexation part of that. The pre-zoning is another action, and that is when land that is in the county becomes a designation for land in the city. So the land in the county right now is AE-20, which is that agricultural, exclusive agricultural zone, and then that will convert, when it comes into the city with a pre-zone action, to the R-17. The Planning Commission has a number of findings that they have to make to approve a pre-zone, and that's listed in your staff report from A to H that you will need to review and make, and that's into your resolution also. One of the things that you need to keep in mind, too, is the planned unit development process. That is the third... The third action that you'll be requested to take. It involves more of a focus on design and how to make a functional, aesthetically pleasing working environment within the city. It is... It can include a combination of different dwelling types, variety of land uses, but at the end of the day, it really is a trade-off from the perhaps more restrictive zoning ordinance to something, you know, that may involve the use of more higher, greater amenities that would... The city would find desirable, and then there's some flexibility within design. So under the North Kingsburg Specific Plan, there's quite an emphasis on design. You can see it in your staff report where they talk about avoiding a monotonous style of garages dominating the streetscape, a mix of single and two-story units, that garages and driveways should not be the primary feature. That's not what you should see when you drive down the street, and that corner lots get a little special, a little bit more of a special architectural treatment. So hopefully, you know, what that yields is a more aesthetically pleasing neighborhood that's functional and pedestrian-friendly. The staff has worked well with the developer over the years. This is not their first project, and they have models that reflect these goals, and they have worked with staff over time to make them fit that. They've been very willing to work with us in terms of creating alley-loaded models, which we very much appreciate. That makes our alleys actually usable, takes some cars off the street, and that's one thing that we have really encouraged with other developers, too. We are requesting, too, that there be an effort to limit repetitious models and patterns of the same home within proximity to each other, so we are in discussions about that, so we have a variety of houses within every street. The vesting tentative subdivision map is the last action that you're asked to consider, and this is more led by the Subdivision Map Act. It's fairly prescriptive. It involves work by the city engineer as well as the planner, and that involves a lot layout and circulation and some, you know, frontage improvements and that and the like. We do have lot sizes for this proposal that exceed 9,000 square feet, with the largest being over 13,000 square feet, so they tend to be on the bigger side for Kingsburg, but that is their business model, and they have, you know, they have been successful for that in the past, and they're continuing with that. 25% of their lots do exceed 10,000 square feet, and that's one of the requirements of the North Kingsburg Specific Plan. They have included a small neighborhood park, which has been the focus of some detail with the staff, especially the city engineer. It's just under an acre park adjacent to Mendocino Avenue. Carol, do you have the site plan there? Yeah, the tenant map, the tenant map, if you could bring that up. Maybe that's easier to see or maybe not, but there's an adaptive park that's being proposed up in that corner, and that will include picnic tables, drinking fountain, play structures for a variety of ages. This, I think, might be our first adaptive park. Am I right, Dave, on that?
Yeah.
In the city of Kingsburg, meant to accommodate a variety of abilities. There'll be a shade gazebo and landscaping and other amenities identified by city staff. So that's... That we consider to be quite the plus. They are proposing five-foot sidewalks and seven-foot parkways, which will be planted with street trees in consistency with the North Kingsburg Specific Plan philosophy, and they are also, of course, included standard alleys, which is a 16-foot alley. There's always a requirement that utilities be addressed when you're doing a subdivision map, and Selma-Kingsburg Fowler has given us the will-serv letter for this project, so they are... They have the ability to treat the sewage from this, and the stormwater runoff will be conveyed to the onsite basin, which is, I believe, to the west there of the map. And that's about... That will be 1.34 acres, so. A grading and drainage plan will be submitted by the developer, and the developer has to determine how and where the stormwater will be managed. The guidelines, design guidelines again, with the planning and development, you know, it really does pertain to the house as it relates to the street. So, you know, we're happy that this... We've come this far, I think, in terms of design for Kingsburg. It does take... Sometimes some developers are more receptive to that than others, and we very much appreciate that this is a team that we can work well with, so. The environmental review was somewhat extensive. We had an initial study mitigated negative declaration, and when you hear those words, sometimes that might put you to sleep, but what that means is that environmental impacts were identified, and they were of a nature that a program was developed to address those environmental impacts. They were not particularly unusual at all for the Central Valley. Most of them just had to do with excavating and that sort of thing. And so there is a program that keeps staff and the developer equally accountable as the development occurs to mitigate any environmental impacts that they may have. It was circulated with the mandated time, and there was only one comment, and that was from another state agency, and those were all addressed by staff and the consultants, so. With that, I think the developers are here tonight. They may have some things to add. I will review the recommended action by Planning Commission, and we can do... Probably need to do it again before the end of the evening, but there are four... There are actually five actions. The first one would be to approve the initial study mitigated negative declaration and the monitoring program for the annexation, the pre-zone, the planning and development, and the vesting tentative map. The second is 2024-06, adopting it, and that is your annexation detachment resolution. The third would be to pre-zone those acres from the AE-20 to R-17. The fourth would be to approve the planned unit development and approve the requirements for that development, and the fifth would be to approve the vesting tentative subdivision tract map. So with that, I conclude my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions. And again, the applicants are here in the audience, and that concludes for today. Thank you.
I have a question for clarification. We have four resolutions. As you said, there was five things we had to approve. Other than the four resolutions, what's the fifth thing?
It's just a... Yeah. It's just a... To approve the initial study didn't take a special... A separate resolution.
Okay.
But that's just... You have it for your review, and that action needs to be taken for CEQA purposes.
All right, sir. We cheated you out here, five minutes of being able to speak at the beginning. I don't know. So even though it's not a public hearing, I'm going to give you your five minutes back, and now is the time for you to come up and...
Mr. Chairman, do you want to have questions and comments by the commission to staff before you open the public comment portion of the public hearing?
If there's an advantage to that, sure.
I think that's normally the way that we handle it.
He might bring up some things that would initiate questions and comments, but whatever you think, whatever you decide.
Well, I think if the commission has questions of staff with regards to the staff report, that would be good to have that happen first, and then you can open up the public comment portion of the public hearing.
Oh, okay. That's not on the agenda, so...
Usually, that's the way it is.
That's... Yeah, because you opened the public hearing, and you took the staff report, and now you can proceed with comments or questions from the commission to staff, and get those clarified, and then you can open up the public comment portion of the public hearing.
Well, that's my mistake, because I was following the agenda that doesn't even...
And the agenda doesn't have...
Doesn't even mention public hearing on here. So let's identify the proper protocol here. So it's not on the agenda. So right now, we're in the regular calendar, and our next step would be to do what?
Well, we should have opened... It should be on the agenda. So you would open the public hearing and then seek any clarif... Any questions that the commission may have to the staff report. And then, once those questions are answered by staff and the commission has no further questions relative to the staff report, then you can open up the public hearing for public comment and allow everybody in the audience who wishes to speak on the matter, give their testimony, and then you would close the public comment portion of the hearing and take it back to the commission for further discussion and questions, and then action on the item.
All right. Okay. Okay, so we're a little bit ahead of ourselves. Okay, so I'll open the public hearing now. We've already had the staff report. So does the commission have any questions or comments to the staff on their report?
I have a question. Just out of curiosity, what was the issue with the Department of Toxicity or toxic... Whatever that was?
The letter, I believe, had to do with pre-existing soil conditions and what would be done to monitor that. I think in your mitigation monitoring program, there should... That should be outlined. I don't have that with me, but it should be at the very end of your packet, attachment So a lot of what they brought up was already covered by federal and state law, so although it was useful to be reminded of what their concerns were, a lot of the practices that they wanted, you know, wanted to highlight are already... Are tasks that we already do in the normal course of approving a project.
So were the toxic report, like chemicals that they've used for fertilization?
You know, in the past, yes.
Like, how long ago? Do you know?
No, I don't. I don't know.
Okay. And I'm not finding this number seven. I don't know where... It doesn't say... I don't think... I have page numbers, but I don't have anything that says...
There's one that's on the screen now, if you can see that. I don't know if that's clear. Yeah, chapter five in the initial study.
Oh, that's why I can't find it. Okay.
They didn't get this. Sure. Let me copy the letter. Thank you.
Oh, that's so much easier. Thank you.
Table 5.1 of the mitigated negative declaration sets forth the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, and it deals with various issues. The mitigation measures deal with the Swanson Hawk and any nesting issues, and provides a monitoring to occur with regards to the prior to construction and during construction. There's a bat roost issue that, again, is considered and monitored and mitigated through the program. Archaeological remains, in the event that there are unidentified archaeological remains that are found during construction. There's a program, a monitoring program, and compliance issues that have to deal with that. If there's any unique paleontological resource sites that are found during construction, there's a monitoring program with regards to that. So those are the three... Those are the mitigation measures that are identified in the mitigation and monitoring program, and those are... Were identified as a result of the initial study that was prepared by the consultant. And so we're dealing with Swanson Hawk, we're dealing with mature... Both the bat roost, B-A-T. We're dealing with archaeological remains and with unique paleontological resources, if any of those occur during construction.
So out of curiosity, what do you do for the... If you find that the Swanson Hawk is nesting, what do you do at that point? It has to be done early.
We have to... You have to monitor to see if that occurs, and then there is certain... You'd have to get the assistance of a qualified biologist to make some determinations with regards to... If you find potential evidence of Swanson Hawk, then you have to retain the assistance of a qualified biologist, and then they have to do a review and address how that's going to work, what things may have to be done to mitigate that effect.
So we would relocate the nest?
Well, that depends upon what the biologist says and depending upon what is found.
We're not going to be killing birds, are we?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
You're not going to be killing birds.
And what about the bats? Same situation?
Same... Yeah, same situation. We have to get a qualified...
As long as you aren't killing bats or hawks, I'm okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. That's a very... It's a very common list, I would say, for this region. There... And many of the... Both the cities and the biologists who work with these species are quite familiar with some of the potentialities and the seasonalities, too, of some of these animals and birds, and when they nest, and when not to disturb them and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I have another question. The walkways that you're talking about putting in, instead of alleys? Is that what I read?
No, the alleys will be included. It's not an "instead of" in this case.
Okay, so it's... I don't see on the map where this walking path would be. Can you tell me where it would be? The walking path? It's supposed to be a walk... You said there might be a walking path. Where would it be?
When the applicant... When we open the public comment portion, then you can ask those specific questions of the subdivision by the applicant.
All right. That's all I have then.
Anybody else have any questions for staff? Because over the years I've seen things change as the, as the development progressed into construction, suddenly the things that have been approved weren't showing up anymore. And I, I, I think it's called the Larnar property, they had thirty-seven units and they were supposed to have the, the special North Kingsburg specific plan, corner developments on, on the streets, and none of them did. They went ahead and constructed it just like they wanted and there was no compliance, there was not compliance with the Larnar specific plan as was approved in the map. So who polices this? Who goes around and checks this construction to make sure that the residential corner development is, is being developed as it was supposed to, because that didn't happen with the Larnar property? Who goes around to make sure that the sidewalks are as they were approved on the map and didn't change somewhere down the line? Like a, I'll mention the Hash property, Hash property was supposed to have a bunch of apartments. They never appeared, I don't know where they went, but there was supposed to be a number of apartments on Avenue 384, they just disappeared. We approved apartments and they disappeared. So these things seem to change and morph as time goes on and who polices this?
So the developer, Dave Peter, City Engineer, the developer will take the approved tentative map and the conditions of approval and develop construction plans that will review and make a determination as to compliance with the conditions of approval. Some of those details obviously are not shown on this tentative map because it's just a tentative map, so the construction plans are much more detailed. So that's my job, is to make sure that the construction plans meet all the conditions of approval that are, are approved here tonight. In regards to the product that's put on the lots, that's kind of out of my purview in terms of the buildings that go on the lots. I'm just mostly an infrastructure guy.
So who's responsible for that?
That, that is a, that's a planning building department responsibility, so when, you know, when there are approved plans and there, the setbacks aren't met, or if there's some deviation that's not on the plans, then that's a conversation that you have at that point with, with the, with the developer and then with, with staff.
And I'll, I'll just add on the Hash project, I think the apartments were supposed to be along 396, correct? So that's in Tulare County jurisdiction, so I'm not sure how much the city had to say about the conversion of those apartments to single-family homes, because that's in Tulare County.
Interesting.
Yeah, that's a little, that's a unique subdivision for sure.
That's interesting. Okay, so run that by me again. Who is responsible for making sure that the project is constructed as approved here tonight? Who's responsible for that?
For the infrastructure, streets, sidewalks and alleys and those sorts of things, that's me. Setbacks, buildings and everything is the building, the building department.
So, so if the corner, if the, the residential corners are not built the way they're supposed to be built, who's responsible for checking that out? Because what this entails is somebody going up to the construction site and actually looking at it once in a while.
Yeah, so.
Who's gonna do that?
Chairman, I have a question about, when you, when you means the residential corners, what, what are you referring to?
Are you thinking something on our property?
Are you referring to a concrete curb ramp? Are you referring to the fence, the fence?
No, 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 the, the, the footprint of the house.
Oh, okay.
Where, where the garage goes and.
That's, that's.
It didn't happen over there.
That's the building department.
On their, on their corner lots.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, A.J. O'Connell, building official for the city. I'm responsible for the inspections of the construction sites for their conformance, not only to building code, but also to zoning code requirements. The tentative map that's in front of you today essentially establishes the vesting rights for the recordation of the map. The development itself, the actual construction sites, they have to meet all of our requirements for the zoning of the property of which you're going to be doing a pre-zone today. So that includes lot coverage, that includes setbacks, distances between structures, we verify all of that out in the field. Now, one of the conditions of approval that you're gonna be looking at today is part of the North, North Kingsburg specific plan requiring the diversity of the lots, diversity of the models, and yes, the emphasis on those corner lots that you're, that you're talking about. Before a building permit is pulled, our staff does review the potential model that is going to be going in on that specific lot, and we make sure that it conforms with what is approved as part of the conditions of approval. So to answer your question, yes, there is staff input on, in the office and on-site to ensure that they meet the conditions of approval on-site.
Okay. Apparently it didn't happen before, I don't know why, but I'm glad to hear that it's happening now. So, so if we have any questions about the progress of construction, we would call you.
Mr. Chairman, my door is always open, especially for somebody like you, sir.
That's good, thanks. All right, yeah, maybe we'll get it, get it to comply with, with their specific plan totally this time. So that's, that's the end of that question. Anybody else have any questions about, or concerns about this? Because the planning commission was not invited to provide any input to the development of this map at any time up to tonight. So if you have any concerns about this map, now is the time to bring it up. So the city will have to deal with any concerns we have now, since we were not involved in the development of this map prior to this evening. The, so if nobody has any questions for staff?
I, I'm just curious why there's, these are all R1s, nobody put any R3 in there since we've been linked into R3? Can I ask that question?
We're, we're working, we're working towards that.
Okay.
I think, I think we've all, we've all endured a few housing element meetings recently and I think there are, I think the state would love us to put in R3s and a lot of other housing, so.
Just curious.
If you want to be a cheerleader for that, that'd be great.
Just curious.
Which opens the door for one of my questions. No duplexes, no triplexes, no quadruplexes, but all single-family homes. Was that ever brought up a site plan review about, this is a perfect opportunity for staff to talk to the developer about a few multifamily projects, because we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago and there was a lot of conflict about trying to squeeze some multifamily projects next door to existing residential areas and they were not happy about it. And that caused some controversies and some problems. And we'll go through it again if, if we, if we try to input multifamily areas into the existing neighborhoods, we'll go through that conflict again. So this is a perfect opportunity, and I've mentioned this many times, new construction, nobody's built out yet, duplex, quadruplex, triplex, constructed properly, they can look like single-family homes, and it helps us comply with some, with some multifamily. Was that ever discussed at site plan review?
Not for this project, however, the, this developer and staff has, have been in conversations about that for, for the future. That, right now, this is their business model, I think they're here to speak to that tonight. I think they're, they've indicated willingness to consider that in the future.
Will there be any interest on the city council changing the Larnar specific plan to, to make that mandatory for new developments?
The city council has the opportunity to make any decisions or investigate any changes to the zoning ordinance to address issues of that nature, and that's up to the discretion of the council.
All right, well, I've harped on this for a long time now, I guess I'll harp on it some more. We have a council member here, I would, I would ask our council member to take it back to city council, this is a perfect opportunity to get that done with these new developments, and you don't have to try and squeeze in multifamily after, after, after the project's already constructed. All right.
I have a question in regards to that. With the developers at this, you're here, right? Yes. Would you be able to incorporate it into this instead of waiting for the future?
Why don't we wait until we open the public comment portion of the public hearing?
Okay, I'm always jumping ahead, all right.
All right, no more, no more questions from the commission? All right, so we'll open the public comment section. Now, sir, is your opportunity.
Hi, my name is Cam Hayes, I'm a longtime resident of Kingsburg, California. My mom lives catty-corner to where these properties are being put to where they want to build, and I'm just to the point where I think they need to slow the roll in Kingsburg, we're, we're going too fast, too big, too fast here for me. That's, and I, I noticed that, I got this letter at my mom's, nobody else in town got this letter, does it matter not to the people in town where they're building or just the people that live around where they're gonna build? I don't know, I don't, I didn't really get that, because I live in Kingsburg, I didn't get this letter, Robert, with this zoning stuff on it, I didn't get it at my house. You got it?
Neither, I know.
You didn't get it either, nobody got this letter, I don't know, or there, I think there would be a ton of people here, because I talked to people around town, we, we basically have outgrown Main Street. If you come down this Main Street anytime, night or day, there's not a parking spot on it. My mom goes to lunch with two or three of her friends, which she graduated from Kingsburg High School with, they go to lunch here, my mom says she has to walk two or three blocks, my mom's eighty-nine, she lives on the corner of Kings, of Brothers and, and Mount, and Minusino, that's, her name is Vern Hayes, she lived in this town all of her life, my dad was a teacher here at the high school, my brother used to be the city guy here, so, and he didn't get one, and he lives, the next, he lives actually on my mom and dad's part, a parcel of their property, he didn't get this. So I'm thinking that it's because it's happening so fast, I, it just seems like in this town we're building, building, building. I don't know, but I, I don't know if anybody can, can tell me this, but at one point I think there was a three percent grow rate per year cap here, is that still in effect? There's a three percent grow rate, and we're not growing faster than three percent right now? I find that hard to believe, because I see houses going up like crazy everywhere, every, I mean, plus, and then another thing I, that I talked to somebody about and they said that they should have to fill some of these parcels in town before they keep moving out, because there's one like right across the street from Rayford Johnson, there's a big parcel there, there's that parcel that you're talking about on, on Cam Avenue, that's, that's had a sign there for I don't know how long and they're not building there. Seems to me we should have to fill up these places that are in town before we start pushing it out that way, and it just seems like they're eating up that property out there, and I, I tell you, they're not gonna get my mom and dad's place, they ain't gonna build there. So as far as I'm concerned, where it's come to right now, where they tore down that big two-story house with all the trees in front, as the, where it gets, the fence ends, that's the, where it should end as far as going that way south of Kingsburg. I don't think it should go any farther than that. And I think that a lot of people agree with me, because I've talked to a lot of people, my sister works in this town, says that her customers come in and said, there's no place to park. I mean, I don't want to see this town turning to Salma or Dinuba with all these big chain stores and like a large city, that's the, the beauty of this town is the smallness and the quaintness of it. That's why people come here, that's why people want to live here. If more, it keeps getting bigger and bigger, pretty soon there'll be houses, we'll just drive, you'll go from Kingsburg right into Selma and then you won't ever see a piece of land between the two. I just don't want to see that happen to this town. I love this town. And people ask me, why do you live in Kingsburg? I said, because it's God's country, and to me it is. And I, when I go outside and I see those mountains, that with the clear sky right down my street, it's God's country and I'd like it to stay that way. I don't know, another thing that I heard, I don't know if this is true, but I heard the people that work at T-Mobile consider their kids to Kingsburg High School without living in the district, is that true? Does anybody know that? I've heard that. And from a fairly reliable source, I don't know if it's true, but to me, they shouldn't be doing that, they're, you're bringing in people and taxing our schools, and plus the, I talked to somebody else that knows a lot of stuff about the city, and he said that our infrastructure may not be able to handle this, in fact, I thought I heard her say something about part, I mean, Fowler take, giving up part of their sewage to, so they could over, take care of all the sewage and the, the parking, we need more parking, we're losing parking, the sewer and water, they're gonna be tax-taking more of our water. I know one thing, now I've noticed at my house, sometimes you turn on the water late at night and it's real weak, it's like they're turning it down at night to keep the water up, I don't know if anybody else has noticed that, but my water's weak at night, during the day it's better. I think we're, we're gonna be using too much water, too much sewage, and our parking is shot. What are we gonna do with Main Street? You can't, we can't build another Main Street, the quaint as this Main Street is, to take the parades down, what are we gonna do? Build a Walmart and a, all these huge places to have a Main Street? I don't know, that's just my own opinion. I know that I, I've talked to a lot of people who agree with me, and the fact that I wouldn't even have got this letter, except for I was at my mom's house and she's been having trouble with her bills, so I've been opening up her mail and helping her with her bills, and I got this. And this is my mom's place, right here, right there, and here's the red ones, all coming up to it. I don't know, it's just to me, it's a, two, this, this town is moving too big and too fast, it's getting too big, too fast. I can't believe there's only three percent of growth going on right now. But that's beside the point, I, I don't know anything how to prove that or how to know that, but if you say it, I'll believe it, but it seems to me like there's a lot more building than three percent going on in this town. That's all I pretty much got to say, I'm against growing this town too fast, I mean, you know, they're, they just got done with that big one that's going out towards my mom house, I don't know how many houses there, are there, but there's a huge thing there, and now they're wanting to put a huge one on both sides and just keep going. Somewhere we have to slow our roll and, and keep this town, the small town and the great town that it is. That's all I got to really say.
Thank you, I just want to bring something to your attention, have you.
What's that?
I want to bring something to your attention.
Okay, please.
Have you taken any of these concerns to our city council?
No, I haven't, I, this is my, I just got this letter from my mom and it said that there was this meeting.
No, he has some very good points. The city council actually has more decision-making authority than we do, so I would encourage you to find out when the next city council meeting is, and come and you can present your concerns to them.
I would love to.
And, and you might, you might be able to get more action from them than from us.
Okay, that's, that's great, I'm just trying to say we're getting too big, too fast.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
December eighteenth, yeah.
So we, so we've opened the public comments, so anybody else in the public want to make any comments?
Okay, so Dave Crinklaw, West Art Construction, 13837, South Cederker. First of all, I want to talk a little bit about the high points of this, and I, I go back along these in this town, as Paul knows, and I was here during the, the North specific plan, things came to a halt for about two years out there because of that plan, and know all about it, so it's a wonderful plan, if you drive through our neighborhoods, you'll see that it is in effect. The, the Larnor project, I think Holly was not even around, I know A.J. wasn't, and so there, maybe there was a different guard on duty at policing that, but I know they do a wonderful job for the city. Every plot we do has a plot plan and it shows that which home's gonna go on, the setbacks, if it's rear garage or if it's front garage. You look at some of our corner lots out there and I'm very proud of what we've done there, it's a really good look, I hope everybody has driven through there recently. There's four phases in Kings Estates, one of the reasons that project's done well is because of the large lots and the known neighborhood and the known people that live there. This is our last phase, this is across the street on the Jackson property. The reason we were able to obtain that property is he wanted to retire and move on, and sometimes that's what happens. So this is our phase five, we decided to go ahead, I know it looks like it's a large ninety-seven lot subdivision, but the amount of time and effort it goes into doing these projects, we decided to do the whole thing, typically you would do that in a half, but we know that's probably a five-year build-out out there at the current absorption rate. You do get seventy-seven permits a year, that's part of the growth ordinance, we're very well aware of that. So in the whole city, that's all you can get, is seventy-seven single-family permits a year.
Per year?
Per year, sir, yeah, per year. And what, what we found happens is, great city, kids go off to college, they get married, they live somewhere else for a while, they want to come back. So in the whole city, that's all you can get, is seventy-seven single-family permits a year.
Per year?
Per year, sir. Yeah, per year. And what, what we found happens is, um, great city, kids go off to college, they get married, they live somewhere else for a while. They want to come back. Excuse me. So they need a place to come back to. If you didn't have any new homes, they're really gonna come back to. So I'm proud to be part of that. We've got attorneys out there, doctors, CPAs, police chiefs, you name it. RNs, just, it's a wonderful, wonderful community. It's Kings Estates. It's part of Kingsburg. People want to move in and live there because it is part of Kingsburg. And Kingsburg does a great job at doing that and controlling their growth. We have built, as you know, on the west side and previously, before Reagan School was put in, we've built entry level, more entry level homes, we'll call them, very nice. And we did some multifamily there. That works well there. Paul, if you remember, we had a project, it was on the Olson piece, probably oh-three, oh-four, and it had multifamily proposed.
It did.
You couldn't, there wasn't any room in this room. And they were out on the curb. There's a lot of people that live out in that area. And when you say multifamily, they came in here with vengeance. And we had proposed that. So it's not in our best interest to do something like that because it's gonna get shot down, either at your level or at council level. We're doing what the North Specific Plan calls out for, and I think we do it very, very well. Holly's worked very hard at this staff report. This, these are two-year projects, because it's taken us two years to get to this point. Hence why we decided not to split it and, and, and come in with the ninety-seven. It does not mean they're gonna get built out, like I say, probably four or five years, and then, and then we're done. There's, there's no more real property around there that's really fits what we try and do. So, um, I'm here to answer any questions. I take pride in this town. I, I would appreciate your support on this project. And again, and your staff, this staff is really a good staff. They work very hard getting these things in front of them. And luckily, you don't have to do it too often, right? Because there's a lot of work that goes into these projects. Answering any questions? Very large lots, somewhere over lots, go up to thirteen thousand feet. The average lot size is ninety-three hundred square feet out there. It's even larger than what we've done previously and where we're at. Good inspector here. AJ's a, he's tough. But that's what I want. I want a good, tough inspector. And does a good job for you guys. Anyways, here to answer any questions.
Is, are you doing something on the Quaid property, too?
Yes. What, what happened there? Jackson piece, they came to us, wanted to sell to us, and then the Quaid's found out probably a year and a half ago or so. And I was like, okay. And we'd already mapped it, so we had to change our map. Worked out well, but it's kind of funny. It's got a long cul-de-sac.
Yeah, it's got a little king down there.
It was a, kind of a tough one to fit in. But again, they wanted to retire, they wanted to, you know, go on with their life. And we were able to fit it in, and thanks to the staff and their help with making that happen.
Is there a reason why we're not including the other lots off of Academy that are residential agriculture or? I can't remember all my zoning codes.
So typically, when we annex property, obviously, we're looking to annex our property. It has to be property up against an existing neighborhood, which is where we're at. City asked us to take one further north. It's not even ours. It's up toward Corruthers. You, you have to have, they do this, and it's a really good reason. They don't want you just annexing a hundred acres to do thirty.
Understood.
So, and you gotta be able to serve it with water, sewer, and all that. So ours is about thirty-eight acres, but we're annexing, I think, forty-four.
Forty-four.
And they, they asked us to do that, and we, we went along with doing that.
And actually, Fresno, LAFCO asks us to do that, and then they ask you to do that. So that's, that's how your annexation gets approved.
Annexation is, it's tricky because, and, and they, they do a good job. LAFCO would never let us take a lot of property there. There's just no way, no way they'd let you do that. That's the way they control the growth, and of course, our farming is very important also.
I'm just curious, because we got, we've got that residential subdivision that's not been built. It's been tentative since forever, right there off of Cam.
Cam.
And then you've got the residences that are coming off of Academy and Cam, and they're excluded from this also, which I'm just trying to understand what the...
So typically, they would, they would have a tentative map out on Academy. And then, once they get that part through the city, then the city would initiate, working with LAFCO, to bring that property in, if you're talking along Academy. But I think the one on Cam, that's already in the city, isn't it?
Yes, that one is, that one, we got, it looks like there's six.
There's some...
Six residential lots.
That's a strange deal. I, I wanted to do something with that property. The, the title's very clouded on it.
Yeah.
It's got a huge hole. I mean, you're, you're talking a lot of dirt just to get that back to where you could build on it. It's just, I don't know why it has, somebody hasn't picked it up. Yeah, we tried. It's just there's, they, it won't work.
Gotcha.
Anyways, any other questions?
I looked at, I looked at the impact reports, and one of the things I looked at was the water. You know, always, you always hear about, like Cam was saying earlier, you know, water seems to be lighter at nighttime and so forth. And it said in the, in the report that under current water trends or water, gauging rain, that kind of thing, those kind of trends, that the water table would support the subdivision. But do you, do you use, Mr. Crinklaw, do you use a wide number of years in regards to making that? Or it might be an engineering question. How do they come to that conclusion that this subdivision going in and the water table in that area will support it based on the consumption and our current water trends?
I, I can get that one. So, yeah, the Department of Water Resources requires us to perform a calculation that they developed, which takes into consideration our, the amount of supply that we have with our, with our wells. And then it, it requires that we have a safety factor in there, which considers like peak day and peak fire flows all occurring at the same time. And then we need to demonstrate through that calculation that we can supply that amount of water with the new development. So we've done that, and, and that calculation has checked out.
That, that was farmland. It was farmed. So you have a fair amount of water already being used. The difference is, is it's not really controlled, right? It's, it's farmland, farmers, I farm, turning the pumps on, irrigating, you farm. Whereas the city controls the water. They meter every house, obviously. We pay impact fees, not only for sewer, but also water for additional wells and testing and all that. So they're, they're really good about staying ahead of it. So you never get to a point where, I don't know what's with the water pressure on his place. It's something we, we could look at. But you never get like, oh, gosh, we don't have enough water for somebody to come in and do a development. They stay ahead of it by their impact fees. Every home, every permit we pull, we pay a fee that goes into developing a new well.
Can I ask a question? Make a statement?
Sure.
My mom had to deepen her well out there last two years ago. So the water table is down in that area because she had to go deeper to get water. Because she's on her own water pressure system, and she had to dig deeper to get water. So evidently, the water table has shrunk there.
Well, as, as we all know, we went through a drought, which was terrible. I farmed a lot of different places. And it's the, it's the, water table has dropped in, in areas, I'm sure Dave knows here. Thank goodness, it's come back. It's actually come back up. And it looks like hopefully, we'll have another wet year and lots of snow and have a good cycle there. But yeah, I had to deepen some of my irrigation wells, too.
Yeah.
And just for reference, the water table's about eighty-five, ninety feet below the surface here in Kingsburg. And municipal wells are eight hundred feet deep. So we've got quite a bit of...
We're very fortunate with the Kings River also. There's a lot of recharge that goes out to Kingsburg. And then we've worked with the city in the past with our ponding basins, where CID can turn excess water into those ponding basins, and that helps the recharge also. Consolidated irrigation, irrigation district. If they have excess water, they'll put it into their basins, your basins, sorry. And that helps the recharge.
Any other questions for Mr. Crinklaw? Thank you for putting that park in. That's a very nice touch.
Thank you. Our homeowners, they'll praise about the size of the house, or lots, or whatever, but they always say something about the park. So that, that, and hence why we, we like working with your staff to do more parks.
Give us a little feedback on the alley-loaded homes that you've been talking about with the city. What, is that gonna happen?
It, it has happened, sir. We've built many valley-loaded homes. Our last phase, please drive through there. You'll see them. All, all our phases happen. So again, what we do is we have our site plan, and then we show your staff, at least five or six homes next to them, what they're gonna look like ahead of time, before we even do anything, pull a permit. So then they can monitor that. And it's, it's time-consuming on our part, but we get it. We get what they've been directed to try and do and accomplish. And please drive through there. It's, it's a wonderful neighborhood.
Maybe we should define alley-loaded. Does that mean the garages are gonna be in the alley, out the alley?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It makes good use of the alleys, and it changes the front, you know, the look for the home. I, I totally understand.
You ever get, if you ever get a chance to drive up to San Luis Obispo, they have a new neighborhood there with about three hundred homes. Every one of them has the alley in the back. Not one of them has an alley on the front street. And when you drive down the front street, it's a whole different ambiance and visual aesthetic. So if you ever go up the coast there, I'll take a few minutes and drive through that. San Luis Obispo. It's in San Luis Obispo.
We'll do that.
It's very interesting.
You know, it, it, some people flat don't want it. And, and that's, they're, you, you drive through there on the weekends. They got the garage door open. They're in there, you know, polishing their Harley and all that. And that's what they want. And then the neighbor comes over, and they talk, and da-da-da-da. Some people feel like if they're in the back, nobody's gonna know them. Some people like that. They won't bother them. But anyways, alley-loaded, we do, we do quite a bit of that.
Thank you.
I'm here if you have any questions.
Mr. Dix?
Hi. Sherman Dix. I just wanted to speak in favor of the project. You know, my father-in-law bought one of the houses in Dave's subdivision, kind of on the northeast side of Cam and Mendocino. Great house. He loves it. Great neighborhood. We play pickleball in the park. Thank you for that. We love that. So I see that definitely is busy. You gotta get in there early. But yeah, I, I think to your point, and I know Dave echoed it, and many of you said as well, you know, with the growth ordinance. I know how it feels when a new subdivision goes in, but actually, there's been a deficit of building for a long time. And, you know, what Dave's saying on the, the respect to kids living somewhere and coming back, I'm seeing it on the other side, too. Our family, my aunt moved from Fresno. My father-in-law moved from Fresno. My brother-in-law is moving from Bakersfield. And then I have three kids, and they all want to live in Kingsburg, and I want them to live here. So I think that family unit, you know, that's important. You know, we need to have, we need to have housing options for them. So definitely in favor of the project. I think, you know, the product that he's built is great, and subdivision looks like it'll be a good one, too, and a nice new park. So, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
I like what you have to say. I have nothing against the houses that are being built. I'm not saying that they're not good houses. They're not nice houses. They're great houses. They're free houses. I'd like to have one.
We can work that out.
I, I, but I got ten acres out there. But anyway, that's not my point. My point is, I just think it's going too fast. And plus, they, I mean, they took, they, I mean, in the last year, they went from Cam Avenue halfway to my mom's house, and now they want the rest. Where does it end? That's my, that's my point. Where does it end? Where they quit taking it and taking it, taking it? Before long, you're driving from Kingsburg into Selma, and you never even saw a grapevine. That's my point. I don't, I'm, I think they're great houses. They're probably great people making them. That's not my, that's not my thing. My thing is, it's just, where does it end? I mean, they just ate up a big chunk, and then, and now they're annexing for the next chunk and the next chunk. And sure, that means there's lots of money to be made by these people that own these properties. Won't happen to us. Because my kids is in line to get that house next. And my brother, that lives down the street there, ain't gonna let it out. I'm sure you do. Anyway, that's, that's, I'm sure they're great houses. I just think that this town is getting too big, too fast enough. The infrastructure, like I said, Main Street can't handle these, all these people. And where, what do you do with all these people to entertain them?
All right. Thank you very much. So anybody else have any comments? Because we're gonna close the public comment section. And once we close the public comment section, you have to forever hold your peace. You can't come forward and say, "Oh, I forgot to say this." It's too late. Okay? Anybody want to come forward with any comments? Public comment section's closed. We'll bring it back to the commission if they have any, any more, any more questions or discussion before we start to approve the resolutions. Oh, one question. What is the Kingsburg Subdivision Review Committee? It's listed on page seven of eight of the report.
That's a, that's a reference to what, what, the predecessor of Site Plan Review, so.
Say again?
It's a, it's, it's a reference to the, to the predecessor of what is now a Site Plan Review Committee.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment. So I'm actually in favor of this, and because, you know, I, I watched the last planning commission, uh, planning commission meetings and the city council meetings. And what I heard from the people was, you know, no low income or very low income. They're kind of against it. At this, you know, it's obviously not low income or very low income. So I think it's, you know, growth is inevitable. And, you know, my concern is, is traffic. But, you know, if we're gonna grow, you know, this is what I would prefer.
I would like to ask if the fire and police have approved this?
Yes, that's part of the Site Plan Review Committee process. I mean, they're routed to both fire and police. They give comments, and the comments, any, any fire comments should be included also in the, in the, the tentative track, the, the map conditions, so.
Okay, just an encouragement for the planning commission. These projects are supposed to comply with all aspects of the North Specific Plan, and we are supposed to be the experts. So if you haven't read it lately, go back and renew your knowledge of the North Kingsburg Specific Plan. All right, so let's start talking about these resolutions. We got zero-six, zero-seven, zero-eight, oh, no, let's do, let's do this first. I'll entertain a motion to approve the initial study presented here to you this evening. So we have a second to the motion to approve the initial study.
And the mitigation and monitoring program also.
And mitigation and monitoring program?
Yes, sir.
The initial study, the mitigation and monitoring program. Mr. Guns always made the motion. Do I have a second?
As long as there's no bird's bats or shrimp hurt, I'll make a second.
We have a second to approve the initial study mitigation and mon, and the mission, mitigation and monitoring program. Any discussion on the motion or amendments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the initial study and monitoring and mitigation program, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Hearing none, then that motion is approved. Next step is Resolution two-oh-two-four-dash-zero-six, which is a resolution of the City of Kingsburg Planning Commission recommending that the city council initiate proceedings for an annexation. Two-oh-two-four-oh-six and two-oh-seven, we are recommending approval by the city council. And two-oh-eight and two-oh-nine, we are actually the ones approving it. I'm not quite sure what the difference is. What is the difference, Mr. Nolan?
The difference is, is that the city council, the, the city council has jurisdiction over the... The difference is, is that the city council, the, the city council has jurisdiction over the annexation process and, uh, and part of that is the pre-zoning. So the city council will make the final decision, you make the recommendations to them, they make the final decision on annexation and pre-zoning. The resolutions dealing with the plan unit development and the vesting tentative map are decisions that stop at the planning commission unless appealed.
Okay. So, resolution number two oh two four oh six, as I read it, do we have a motion to approve the resolution number two oh two four dash zero six?
Make a motion to adopt resolution two oh two four dash zero six.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion or amendments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving resolution two oh two four dash zero six, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, say no. So that motion carries for approval of resolution number two oh two four dash zero six. Next one is two oh two four dash zero seven, resolution of the planning commission recommending that the city council approve a pre-zone. So, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution, resolution number two oh two four dash zero seven?
Aye, make a motion to approve resolution two oh two four oh seven.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
All second.
We have a motion and a second to approve that resolution. Any, um, discussion on the motion or amendments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving resolution number two oh two four dash zero seven, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. That resolution is approved, or the recommendation for that resolution is approved.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to the PUD, uh, resolution, staff has provided, um, the commission with a revised resolution that incorporated the, um, findings that need to be made under the municipal code for purposes of, um, adopting of the resolution for PUD, so...
So, I think we all got a copy of that next door package on the dais here.
So that's the resolution that you'll be approving?
Right. Okay. Two oh two four dash zero eight, so, I, I think you've all had a chance to look through it. It's, it's a little different than the original one in our package. So, one, we approve the plan unit development, but again, planning commission has not had an opportunity to provide any input on this plan unit development until tonight. So if you have any questions about it, the city's gonna have to deal with your concerns here tonight. Um, I have one question. Particularly for city staff and site plan review. Anybody, well, before I start, anybody else have any questions about the plan unit development? So my question is, supposed to comply with the North Kingsburg specific plan, where's the landscape pedestrian corridors? Mentioned thirteen times in the North Pacific Plan.
Indeed, indeed it is. Um, I think that the landscapes, um, corridors are an amenity. They are, I, I think that it's, it's interesting that you bring this up, uh, this week because that was just an internal discussion that we had about, about that. Sometimes they have been alongside the, uh, the subdivision. Uh, and sometimes they've been internal to the subdivision. And sometimes they have been, uh, they've been absent. Uh, and, and in this case, I think what, what happens when you have these bigger lots, uh, you don't always have the landscape corridors. And sometimes the landscape corridors come, you know, with, with some trade-offs. So, in an ideal world, there would be landscape corridors that would have been, that would have been memorialized and easements created many, many years ago. Sandra, do you wish to, yes, Sandra, well...
I realize that I'm part of the development...
Come, come on up, you, you have the more, actually more history of this issue than I do.
Sandra Stats, West Star Construction, one three eight three seven, South Settler. In regards to the pedestrian pathway, making it a more mobile and, and community-minded vesting. If you, I know you've all had the opportunity to drive through our, um, communities. We have set back sidewalks, there's planters and parkways. We've actually increased that, um, section by two feet. So, you had typicals where you had the sidewalk directly behind curb and it was a four-foot sidewalk, even a five-foot. And then you had your front yard. We now have meandering, um, areas, which is along Eighteenth. And if you notice where we're set back from the block wall, there's lush landscaping, um, also the medians. But within the neighborhood, you'll see the connectivity by the sidewalks, but you're not right up against the house. You have a parkway before and then also as you create going north, you'll have the park and then surrounding that sidewalk and connectivity there. So it's throughout the entire, uh, neighborhood more so. We don't have the opportunity to, uh, currently to connect as we did on phase one where we took one of the alleyways where there was an easement and made a pathway, which we're very proud of that because it's utilized a lot. But that connectivity can continue off of Fourteenth with the sidewalks also. So, there's, there's a lot that's gone into it and a lot of discussion that's been with the staff to make it as, as pedestrian friendly as possible.
I appreciate you pointing that out because that's required in North Pacific Plans to set back sidewalks and that's been done and, and it does make a very nice streetscape. But the landscape pedestrian corridor is not part of, is not a sidewalk. If you wanna see, and I, I don't know why you didn't mention this. We have a landscape pedestrian corridor that has been built from Madsen along Solig. And if you go look at that, it's an eight-foot sidewalk with a setback. It is an actual landscape pedestrian corridor, it's not, it's not a sidewalk. It's, it's special, it's different. And it exists right now, I can't remember the name of the street, oh, Solig, goes all the way, Solig down to Mendocino and then it disappears. I think it was originally designed by the people that drew up this to go from Mendocino to Academy, straight through from Madsen to Academy, a landscape pedestrian corridor, which is basically an eight-foot sidewalk with a greenway and, and shade trees. And unfortunately, it disappeared at Mendocino. So, it's not that difficult to make, if you go and look at it at Solig, it already exists. Um, I can take a Sharpie and I could take this map and show you exactly where it should go right now. And it's not that difficult to put it in. But, uh, that's just me. So, um, yeah, my, so I, I have a concern with this. If I had been asked to review this map previously, I wouldn't be bringing it up now, it would've been done. But the landscape, this does not comply with the North Pacific Plan because the landscape pedestrian corridor isn't there and it wasn't, it's not even, when I look at the map, there's not even an attempt to put it in. So the discussion about the sidewalk being construed as being a landscape pedestrian corridor is, I, I appreciate you pointing that out, but it's not. That's a minimal requirement in North Pacific Plan. So, uh, that's my complaint. Mr. Nolan, I don't know, can we approve this PUD with conditions?
The, the PUD is, the purpose of the PUD is to comply with the provisions of the North Kingsburg specific plan to the extent that they are applicable to the subdivision and the determinations by staff as to other amenities that are, that staff has determined are, are of, of a, of a significance that, that they are placed in this subdivision as opposed to other amenities that can or, or could be approved under the plan unit development. So, the issue we have here is that you have before, you, you have in the new resolution all of the findings that need to be made in order to provide for the approval of the PUD. And staff has made the determination that with regards to this development, the PUD, they've identified those amenities that are required by the, the North Kingsburg specific plan that are, would be applicable to this development based also upon the vesting tentative map that goes along with the PUD. So, you have conditions that are set forth in the resolution for the tentative map, which are, which would be consistent with the plan unit development approval and the findings that are set forth in the resolution.
Yeah, the PUD allows a lot of flexibility, it allows flexibility to exclude things that are required in North Pacific Plan, unfortunately.
Unfortunately, yeah.
And in this particular case, the PUD, as established by city staff, has decided to exclude a major requirement in the North Pacific Plan. And I'm disappointed. Because by excluding this, it's not gonna be put in later. If you don't do it from the start and continue it as was, um, indicated in North Pacific Plan, then it will die. So if there's no landscape pedestrian corridor in this particular project, which is a big project east to west, that's the end of it. That's the end of the landscape pedestrian corridor as required by North Pacific Plan. And for me, that's a huge disappointment. Huge. Now, part of that disappointment arrives from the fact that the planning commission has never been asked to provide any input on these maps. And I, if, if we had been asked, I would've put this in and we wouldn't have the discussion now. But we're forced to, to, to only, we're forced to only have the opportunity to provide these, these points when we get these maps plunked in front of us at, for approval at a meeting. So that, that is my complaint. I apparently, apparently according to Mr. Nolan, we're not allowed to approve this with a condition of putting in a North Pacific, uh, putting in a, uh, landscape pedestrian corridor, unfortunately. So, the, the, the city and site plan review has fallen short in, um, having this, this project put in a landscape pedestrian corridor, which is not that difficult. It's really not that difficult. It's an eight-foot sidewalk, just like the one we have on Solig. And it could've gone up Eighteenth and down Cardinal to, uh, um, Academy or it could go up to Carruthers and over to Academy and it wouldn't be that difficult to put it in. But it hasn't been required and it's not gonna be put in. All right? So, resolution number two oh two four dash zero eight. A resolution of the City of Kingsburg Planning Commission approving the plan unit development, two oh two four dash zero one, for a single-family residential development and associated open spaces. So, do I have a, um, a motion to approve resolution number two oh two four dash zero eight?
I'll make a motion to approve two four zero eight.
We have a motion and a second? Oh no, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number two oh two four dash zero eight. Any, uh, discussion on the motion or amendments? Hearing none. All in favor of approving resolution number two oh two four dash zero eight, say aye?
Aye.
All in favor, say, all, 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 opposed, say no, no. So, um, two oh two four dash zero eight is approved. That's the new resolution that was put forward at our meeting, here. Fourth one. Resolution number two oh two four dash zero nine. A resolution of the City of Kingsburg Planning Commission approving with conditions vesting tentative subdivision tract number six four eight zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number two oh two four dash zero nine.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second to approve this resolution?
All second.
We have a motion and a second to, to approve resolution number two oh two four dash zero nine. Any discussion or amendments? Hearing none. All in favor of approving resolution number two oh two four dash zero nine, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no, no. The resolution passes. All right. Next item on the agenda is... Future agenda items, is that correct, Holly?
Yes, sir, it is. Um, for future, uh, agenda items, we will be, um, meeting, convening again on, uh, January ninth. We will have, um, some training. It will not be, you know, a publicly noticed meeting, but it needs to happen on a fairly regular basis where we talk about the Brown Act and, uh, Attorney Nolan will be in attendance and giving you some, uh, some information that's important to keep us all legal. We also may talk at that point too about the, the Planters Academy and, and any interest in attending that, um, later on in the spring. Uh, we do have a new, uh, planning commissioner, I just wanted to take a, just a few minutes to have Brian introduce himself and let, uh, the public know just what, what brought him to this seat and, uh, uh, anything that we might want to know about him personally. Thank you.
Hi, yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, yeah, I mean, I just lived in Kingsburg, uh, for a few years now and, um, I just wanted to help shape, shape it the way that people want. I've been watching, uh, council meetings and, uh, commission, uh, commission meetings for a while and, um, you know, I just felt that, you know, I can be there to help, that's it.
Thank you.
Welcome. Is that it for future items?
Yes, sir.
Next is, uh, commissioner reports, hmm, something new. What is commissioner reports, what, what exactly is that?
Carol, Carol says it's, uh, if you wish to report on anything, now's the time.
I'll make up a report for the next meeting. Next is to adjourn the regular, adjourn the regular, what's a bid meeting? So that's just to adjourn the meeting? So, I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second? Motion second, all in favor of adjourned the meeting, say aye?
Aye.
You have one more high school, huh? Yeah, he's graduating. Is she a sophomore?